Our meeting will now come to an end. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And now a moment of silence for all men and women in the military and for police who fire fires who protect us from the criminal community. Please be seated. This evening, we are pleased to welcome a candidate for volunteer firefighter, Michael Lane. Michael, please stand where, okay, so that we can welcome you. And now Chief Drisco, do you have some final information?
Sure.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor. Michael is a 2011 graduate of Bardington High School. He's also graduated from Montle College, Loy College, where he received his Bachelor of Science in Business Management. Michael has dedicated himself above the service and received a federal discharge for serving in this Marine Corps, Marine Corps for six years. Honored as a member of the Marine Corps. Thank you.
Do I have a motion to appoint Michael Lane, volunteer firefighter, to the Garden City Trustee to Callahan Lane? Trustee Hire, all those in favor? Fortune Carolina, seven zero.
Welcome, Michael.
Welcome. Would you like me to have you? I have a few remarks about the agenda before we start in. The first thing that I want to draw your attention to is that Items Three and Four A have been removed from the agenda. Want to repeat that? Items Three and Four A are removed from the agenda. Items Five, D, E, and Seven are removed from the consent calendar, and then we will revisit them at the end of our commentaries about the general consent calendar. We are going to add two items to the agenda this evening. Change orders, one at St. Paul's and one in regard to a pipe for the library. So now I'll repeat that just once.
Mayor, before you do, since St. Paul's raises such issues, it's with the St. Paul's bathrooms, right?
Oh, that's right.
Not building itself. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. All right, so Items Three and Four A have been entirely removed from the agenda. Five, D, E, and Seven are going to be temporarily moved to the side, and then we are going to revisit them again at the end, once we have taken care of the rest of the consent calendar. And then we are adding two items to the agenda. A laboratory at St. Paul's and a pipe over the library. Those are the change orders. All right, at this time, we will ask for comments from the department heads, and we'll begin with Commissioner Jackson.
Mayor, I have nothing to report. Just like to mention, it's getting dark earlier, and please be careful what everyone drives, so that the young children out there, and also use your alarms and also check your lights around your houses down your leading walk. Also, I just want to thank everyone in the village, including you, Mayor, and the board for helping me with the beautiful send-off to Inspector Michael Doyle and Detective Richard Don, when I walked out last Friday, it was tremendous, and we had a great response from the community and also from public departments. I just want to thank everybody. Both guys together, had sixty-six years, thirty-three weeks with the village, and also Detective Don had ten other years with other departments, so it's pretty miss here with them, and we'll move forward, but I really want to thank you for what they did for the village.
It was a beautiful ceremony. I had never seen it before, and it was quite impressive. Thank you.
Mr. Drisco, that was very nice, John. And you, we need to thank you as well for putting that all together and doing it. It was amazing. Thank you. It was a nice tribute today for you to be here.
Mr. Chief Jusmane Elam?
Good evening, Mayor. Trustee, I also have nothing on the agenda type. I just want to report, two weeks ago, we started the engagement with Imputation and Tyler. We've had numerous phone call conferences with them, and within two weeks, they'll be on site with our assessment defined as far as migrating the municipality program to Comer and Tyler. So that seems to be going well.
Very good. Let's see, Mr. D Francisco?
Well, let me, I'm going to jump over to number eight on the agenda, award bids. We are, this evening, we are awarding a number of items in the street lighting department. This includes replacement lights, poles, and any various accessories that go into the street lighting, a grid that is in the community. If I want to move back to numbers five, that you had mentioned earlier, Items Five, Six, and Seven. So, we've been speaking a lot about emerging contaminants and some of the new regulations that are coming down from the state, and as of now, the new regulations that the state will be imposing on the water districts and the water parks, they're looking at a very tight timeline. They're looking to impose these regulations January first. So unless things change between now and January first, we will be forced to install new filtration systems throughout the village in a very short timeframe. And there is, the items that you had mentioned earlier are, under normal circumstances, these items would be, have to be bid under the public bidding rules, state law and village rules. But because the state has really forced us into, forced our hand here, we are forced to go after these products very quickly. We have very, there's so many of these products have three, three, four, five month lead times, and we, quite frankly, just don't have that time to go through a bidding process to get this work done. So, more specifically, Item D, and that is the actual filtration system itself, ID, does the work. This is a company in Canada who makes this product. They can basically make about one a week, and keep in mind, this is not just a Garden City issue. Every water district on Long Island is clamoring for these products. So, it's, getting these products in hand is important, and asking this evening to waive the purchasing rules, in this case, to allow me to purchase these directly in an emergency situation, to get it done as quickly as possible, in order to meet the regulations of the state of its kind or first deadline that they're opposing on.
Do you have confidence that we will get through?
Well, we've met, I've met with the company, Item D specifically, the filtration system itself, Trojan, I met with them about ten, twelve days ago. Right now, they said if we order right now, they can get us to them by March, because as soon as they can get there. We should be able, hopefully, to get through the winter unscathed, but come spring, when the, when the water volume increases significantly, I'm going to need every well online, and I need to get filtration set up at every well.
Mr. D Francisco, one last question. Two questions. First one is, what is the total amount of money we talk? Bullhawke?
Well, the initial evaluation that was done by our consultants was, they projected about forty-eight million dollars.
Okay, so right now, you're asking, that's not, that's saying on our part, say, there's one part that you're asking us to waive the point of going through the normal procedures because you're saying that everybody else is big going for it, and we can order this now. How much are we talking about spending now?
Well, I mean, it's approximately three million dollars on this agenda right now.
Okay, so here's my problem. My problem is the second one. The state has not decided whether or not, if it's a state of January first deadline. Again, knowing politicians, nothing ever works on top. And again, I just can't conceive from a common sense point of view, that the state is going to sit there and say to Long Island, here is a seven hundred million dollar bill, by January first, everyone's got to be on board. If you're not on board, that's it. Because the bottom line is, unlike many municipalities, we have been on top of this and have been right from the beginning. There are many municipalities that have been installed. So I cannot conceive that the state will just simply say, January first is a seven hundred million dollar bill. One of the things that they've also done is, they've also said that the original amount of aid that they were going to give was, I think you had said, a grant or whatever, of three million dollars over three years. Now they're talking about increasing that to three million dollars a year, or something like that. Am I correct in that?
Yes.
All right, so the bottom line is, we just took the grant money that they're going to give us, and that's gone from three million over three period of time, now that's gone to nine million. Okay? So it's three million, three million, three million.
Over the years?
Right, right. If they give us, we sold. But again, this is grant money, this is money that they're making available to all municipalities. So, but my point is this, I have a difficult time going out there and spending millions of dollars when I don't know what the actual deadline is, and I don't know when or what I have to be dealing with. Because the state hasn't actually said that this is the, this is the date that we have, this is the number we have to read. It's a huge amount of money.
No, but I disagree.
I disagree completely. Because we have to spend it anyway. Even if they extend it for a year, at some point, we're going to have to spend the money.
We have to spend it, and there's, quite frankly, no time like ASAP.
And what happens if they, what happens if they don't extend by January first? I don't trust New York State.
No, I actually, I also disagree with the fact that they're going to postpone, you know. I think they want to get rid of the liability as soon as possible. Let's face it, they know, everybody knows it's a problem, the longer they sit on it, the more liable they are for something. So why not kick the can to all the municipalities and make us deal with it? By the way, I think we're saying, like, I want to be really clear, there is nothing that says we're going to get three million bucks a year for the next three years to fix this. There's absolutely, we can apply. They're letting all the municipalities apply for it. They're not saying it's a, it's free money, come get it. And, and we applied once, and what happened? Joe? We didn't get it.
The first time we didn't get it, we reapplied again.
So, we should, I, I'm in the school that says, let's buy, let's get at least a couple of things going. So that, you said, like you said, if we need to, you know, get ahead of it, we're really getting ahead of it.
So here's my last question. What happens if after all the listening period and everything else, that the state changes the level? Instead of one percent, the state makes it, I don't know, two percent?
We'll be better.
Or, that the state comes back and says that there are other types of requirements, and I don't even know if we put it in the things that are buying now, or addressed with what they have.
I think, I'm, I'm going out there and I'm buying equipment for what I don't know is the end result.
No, we do know what the, the end result is.
We know what the end result is.
A supposition like, you know, who knows, like Wawa can come out of the ground, I guess, but, you know, at this point, we know what, what's staring at us, we know how to fix it. I think Mr. D Francisco is asking for us to say it's an emergency to get it fixed. I don't think anybody in here would disagree that it seems like it is an emergency. Let's fix the goddamn well. Sorry, but let's, I don't know.
Exactly. I agree.
We just have to go with it.
I assume we're going to start with the brush bowl first, right? So if the levels did get moved, that we're at least knowing that we made it. We're starting, well, we're starting with our primary well and the well that's at the highest level, too. We're really doing four well sites concurrently. The fourth well site is on the agenda tonight, so. And the state from our state about allowing one system to support, or also still waiting for feedback. Going back four out of ten, right? Four to six well sites.
Four out of six.
Going back to what Deputy Mayor Wolber mentioned, if you recall at the last board meeting, Mr. Callahan from H2X stated that the state imposing these regulations immediately is unprecedented. They've never done it before. There's always been a phase in period. For some reason, they don't have a phase in period this time. Doesn't mean they might change it, but at this moment in time, the, the date is January first, and that's how I'm operating, as if it's going to be January first. In two weeks, if they change it, we can dial it back, or two weeks, we can, we can pull back some of the purchase order, we can wait and move on, but.
I don't see any need to do that.
I don't see any, we have.
We don't want it, the water's stuck.
Exactly. Do it. Let's do it now.
We have to do it anyway.
We would have to do it anyway, yes, but if the state gives us time, which is really what we're asking for, the time.
So what do you think by percentage? What do you think we're overpaying by? If by not bidding in the way that the?
Well, for the filtration system itself, there's actually only one system right now that the Department of Health allows us to use.
So it's really not bid end. We're fighting literally with ourselves.
The other item on the agenda, Item E, is a, is, is something that could potentially be bid out to other companies, but right now.
What's the differential? Best case scenario?
I think it's.
A couple hundred thousand dollars, maybe less?
But the major purchase, it's only one company doing it.
The only one that's approved right now by the Department of Health.
My point is.
One second.
Like, there's only one product, Company Action Supplies for it.
Yeah. So there's, there's really not a competitive landscape for us to go through anyways, my point. So there's really not even that much upside to going to bid. So what are we going to do? Like bid a company we can't use anyway?
We haven't got time.
I don't know, we can put you on the spot, I'm just saying, like, I don't, I don't see the logic, I say, you know, if we have to go on it, let's do it right now, that's the logic.
What's your delivery?
The, the, March. Well, March, March should actually receive the product. The installation is, should be fairly quickly, because actually, Item, Item E, letter E, is a, is a self-contained plug-in plug unit. You drop the building, it's like.
So that's if either now or until March.
Correct.
If we wait, we get them, we know.
Right.
Is this possible?
Well, as of today, January first is, is when the rules will go into place. And they give you a phase. No, there's no phase. Well, no, but at the end of sixty days, if the tests come back that you're out of compliance, you're out of luck. But in the wintertime, the volume of water we use is significantly less, and we do have four wells that are under the limit right now, we could operate through the winter with those four wells, but once the spring comes and volume increases significantly, we are.
The long, the long way to water might be to get this stuff.
Well, we're competing against every other water municipality for those, everybody's going for the same thing.
I'll just stand on head.
Just in terms of legal underpinnings, in order to suspend or waive competitive bidding, you need to declare emergency. The nature of that emergency here, as I've heard the explanation, consists of two parts. Part one is an emergency that we need to meet a state regulation or deadline as of now, but that piece may or may not change. The second piece of the emergency is that there's a contaminant in the water and you want to get out. So whether the state of New York rolls back the deadline for five years, or two months, or whatever, you have the option of saying, if you choose to do so and believe it to be the case, that there's still a public health threat, and that independent of the timeline of the state, you wish to declare emergency for background. So both pieces can be and should be a part of a declaration of emergency, if that's what you choose to do.
Pushing it off longer by waiting.
I think that's, that discussion is closed, I would say. All right? Do you have anything else to report today?
I have nothing to report. Joe, a question on the other page. Are we, where are we doing the street light replacement? Was it there with their capital project? Yes, it's, we completed Seventh Street, the next, the next step is Franklin Avenue, and the remainder of the street lights, anything converted, would be another product that would need to be bid, publicly bid.
Very well. Mrs. Wolbe?
Thank you. Mr. Lee, here, and Trustee, this evening, there's only one small minor item on the agenda related to a request to write off a small amount of sundry write-off. This pertains to the incident where a car was stolen and there was damage to village signs, and so was for village council, and vice versa, council recognizations to help this in the balance.
Let me ask you a question. It seems to me that around October, you start to tell us about closing out the old budget. Yes, so I was wondering if we can anticipate, what are you thinking?
Yes, at the next board meeting, I will be presenting the results for the eighteen-nineteen fiscal year. Actually, we're, we're reporting to New York State our financials this week, so we'll have that as well as an update on the first quarter of this fiscal year as well.
Because I can clearly, that's good news, and I can clearly remember that you started actually in the November, beginning of November, putting together materials for the executive staff for the next year's.
That's kind of, we'll be starting that in soon. Seems like time flies.
Thank you, and that's very good, that's very good to hear. And it's interesting, it's so interesting to get that report, as to what we spent in that budget, it's, I find that a big thing to consider. All right, well, Mr.?
Good evening, Mayor.
I'm sorry, I apologize.
No worries. Recreation has two items on the agenda tonight. Number one is item number four, Items B and C. We are requesting a transfer of funds from our St. Paul's Ball Field renovations into our Stewart Ball Field renovations. The bid for the St. Paul's field came in well under budget, and we would like to assign some of these funds to field number two at Stewart, which is the rear field, the seventy-five foot field, which is in pretty rough condition. We would like to remove the clay, regrade, and put down new clay. That is what we're requesting on item number four. Our second item is number nine, which is an award bid. This is the tree and truck landing contract. Recommend the award go to Louis Barbado Construction. Bid price came in, again, considerably under what we had budgeted at thirty-eight thousand nine hundred sixty dollars, and this will cover the replacement of approximately one-hundred-and-fifty of those trees throughout the area. That's all we have this evening. Thank you.
Let me ask a question. Do we use Louis Barbado last year?
We've used them in the past. They're one of the island's bigger tree contractors. One of the benefits to using Barbado is they grow most of their own trees here on the island. They have several extremely large tree farms out in Yampank and Holtsville, and that lowers their cost. They don't have to bring trees in from out of state. They grow their own stock, it's ready to be picked, we can go out there and actually select the individual trees, and they've been grown in our climate, and they've been hardyed off, so they typically do better than the stock that we bring in from other states or other areas. So the quick answer is yes, we've used them before, and they're a good responsible contractor.
I'm sorry, I don't know what you said, but it's thirty-eight, nine, and we're near what we paid last year?
I believe it's less than we paid last year by a couple of thousand dollars. Yeah, we did pretty well this year. Prices are good.
Very good, thank you. Mrs. Swasey?
Yes, Mayor, for the only item on the agenda for conservation is being removed, and that will resurface at a future agenda, but while I have the microphone, I would like to say that, you know, Chief Drisco probably mentioned Fire Prevention Day is Sunday, October sixth at twelve-thirty. Sorry, Chief. But I wanted to say that there were two monuments in this year's capital project, the sewer monument at the train station, and the fireport monument. The fireport monument, while it's not a hundred percent complete the way I want it, it is totally refurbished, clean, re-cocked, new bricks, new plantings, engines in the driveway. I just have to say, I want to thank first of all, Chief Drisco, ex-chief Bill Graham, Trustee Hire, Joe D. Francisco's team, the highway guys, John Barone over in engineering, who put together great spec and up the spines and four great contracts to get the pricing we needed, and also the plantings, St. Etan in Recreation is delighted to, just a total village-wide team effort to support the bombs here to support us so well, so I just want to say thank you all.
Very, very nice, and I've been noticing when I drove by, you know, one of the things that I learned by being involved in the two, the double anniversaries for twenty nineteen is that we have a great collection of monuments, sadly, but we do, and I was thinking that it might be a good idea, I just wanted people to know that I'm throwing around the idea of reinvigorating the beautification committee that we once had in the village, because it's a, a big task to keep after all of the monuments, and also, they could be a source of information about deciding on flowers, which flowers and so forth. So I'm thinking of bringing that committee back. I think they did a good job, and maybe we'll speak about that in our next meeting. The other thing I had come to the realization of by being involved in all of that carry-on, which was wonderful, and we're not finished with it yet, is that it really might be us to have more than one historian. There's a tremendous amount of cultural things going on in the village. We have a rich history, we need to gather it up, promote it more than we do right now, so I am also thinking about that, getting at least one more historian to help with that, and there's a lot of precious things in Garden City, I don't know where we're putting them, I don't know, they're not being described with plaques or being labeled, so I just wanted to give you a heads up that I'm thinking about that. All right, so now.
Mayor, I think our chief would like to say something.
Or do I skip you?
You did.
Oh, and you know, that probably is really often, Mrs. Swasey said something about Fire Prevention Day. We gave the vibe, I said.
Before we do that, I just want to say to Ralph, I appreciate the job that our employees did. Well, you guys did a wonderful job on that monument. I watched it through its steps, and I couldn't be happier with the way it turned out, so thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Hire. And just so the board understands that, just like the Rainbow Monument that we did and the one over by Second Street Station, the World Works, the World Online, we do plan on maybe vacuuming any trees, flagpole, and some lights, we just don't have the time and, and we probably did a bunch of dollars as well, but that'll be in the future.
Well, last year, when we resurrected the two double A plugs, the DPW, the network DPW, oh, like, what a job they did, they had the angle so that they could be stable, and, oh, they, it was wonderful, that last year. So, yes, DPW and Rec. have, have a long history of helping us out in our collection of monuments and plaques and so forth, and with a real aesthetic touch and a beautiful image.
And I can say, on those particular projects, it's more than just a job and more of a particular part.
Oh, they definitely did. And, and they put a whole, let's say, a whole circle of field stones around the monument, the plaques, and it was just wonderful. One thing, things that we could think of there, too creatively, like, I went on a trip to Halifax, Nova Scotia, and they had a Victorian garden in the park. It was very, very large, and it was beautifully done and beautiful flower shrubs, and so I was thinking that in keeping with our heritage, maybe we could, when we work with the colors and escaping more, kind of try to make that Victorian, try to make it that, maybe some Victorian gardens. Also, when you enter Garden City, on Franklin Avenue, over where the mobile station is, there's a really beautiful piece of property there on the northeast corner, and we could make that, because it's an entry point to our village, we could make it a Victorian park-like setting. So there's a lot we can do, and that's why I'm thinking, we need more than one historian, we need the beautifications committee, and we certainly can't lose our friends in the DPW and the local departments. Okay.
Fire chief.
Oh, that's very, wow.
Time's up.
Oh.
I just want to reiterate, Fire Prevention Day is Sunday. Just want to reiterate, Fire Prevention Day is a Sunday, twelve-thirty. We have a great day of events planned. I hope the village and the families can attend. It should be very informative, see everyone there. And again, I'd like to thank Mr. Swasey, Trustee Hire, Joe D. Francisco, and our Department Chairman, Mr. Lane, for the work on the firefighter monument. And actually, having most of the work done before our ceremony, we have a ceremony there Sunday morning, and work is done before that, we actually go to the monument and have the services there. It was done in a great manner, it looks beautiful, and someday might even, the rest of the fire department members will be on the back, probably be displayed, so I think you all thank. That's all.
All right.
Not for a very long time.
Oh, boy.
Okay, um, now, uh, there's something that I want to add in here. No, I think I took here a little event. That, um, I wanted to make a couple of comments about the flag raising. The town of Hempstead, uh, last week, uh, had a flag raising in keeping with our sesquicentennial and our centennial anniversary. And, um, I, I must say that they bended over that route to make a very, very beautiful ceremony. And our wonderful village lyric of dark green and royal and deep blue with its crackly line on it was hoisted up over the town hall in Hempstead. And they were so good to us and had beautiful speeches for us. And, uh, it was just, or what, and provided some breakfast for us. And it was just a wonderful, uh, event. And we were very, very pleased and honored at the way that they handled the whole situation. And it was a great honor for our two great anniversaries that we had in this year. And we will not have something like that for a very long time. And so I thought it was very, very thoughtful of them. So I just wanted to let you know about it. And there'll be something written about it in the Garden City meetings this week, and there'll be some pictures. But, um, a lot of people came. Uh, a lot of people from the executive staff came. Um, Trustee Hire, Trustee Delaney, Delio, and, um, people from the Centennial Committee. And, uh, also just neighbors, Garden City people. And, uh, it was just very, very nice. It was really a fine thing for them to do for us. Okay. Now, we are going to move to a public hearing. And at this time, I'm finished with all that. Yes? Oh, yes, um, uh, town, uh, the National County is going to light their dome up for us on a given date in the near future.
October eleventh.
October eleventh. And all residents of the village are welcome to attend that. And, uh, I'm sure that that will be a wonderful ceremony. Awesome. Thank you. Um, all right, at this time.
Anything else from trustees and comments?
Okay. Um, at this time, I know that there is a scheduled public hearing on a proposed law in connection with recovery of the course of emergency response actions. Is there a motion to open that public hearing? Trustee, uh, Delio. And second, Trustee Delaney, and all in favor? And that carried seven zero. Very well. The public hearing is open. Mr. B, would you kindly summarize the proposed local law?
Certainly, Mayor. Uh, this is a proposed local law actually to repeal something rather than to enact something. Uh, in our village code, we have had for a number of years a provision wherein if the fire department responds to an emergency situation to clean up, uh, spills that might be environmentally hazardous, then the cost of that cleanup, uh, is placed upon, uh, the individual from, uh, whose car the, uh, fluids or other debris, uh, escaped. That has been characterized in Garden City's own code as an emergency response action. Under state law, it has been determined that emergency response actions of that particular nature are not recoverable. They are deemed a part of the cost of the general tax bills. And therefore, uh, our local code is in conflict with state law. Uh, we challenged that in a local district court, lost. It was appealed to the appellate term and lost again. Where the appellate term found that our local code provision, uh, in violation of state, uh, law and policy. And I'm therefore recommending that it be formally repealed rather than be left on the books and be unenforceable. So for that purpose, I have recommended repeal of that provision of the code.
Thank you, Mr. B. Does any trustee wish to speak on this local law? Does anyone? Is there any citizen that would like to speak of, of that? Ask a question? All right. Then I would say, at this time, is in, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
No, I, McCrinos.
All right, so, Trustee McCrinos and how about Trustee Foley? And all in favor? And that motion carried seven zero. All right, the public hearing is closed. Is there a motion to adopt the local law? Trustee Delaney and a second, Trustee McCrinos, and all of those in favor? And so that motion carried seven zero.
So the law is now repealed, is what I saw.
That's right.
On detective bond, our file with the Secretary of State, which will be taken care of.
All right, so then, uh, thank you. The local law is adopted. The next item, uh, of business is citizens' comments on agenda items. Is any citizen wish to speak? Mr. Orros?
Good evening, everyone. Bob Orros, twenty-eight, Barrow. Yeah, I want to talk, uh,
It's an agenda item?
Yes, it's an agenda item. It pertains to the expenses that are going to be undergoing for the, uh, for the water, for the wells and so on. I agree with, uh, Trustee Oliverback in the fact that skepticism on getting any sort of rebate is high in the sky. Uh, if you're considering three million dollars per well, we have almost, what, almost, correct me if I'm wrong, forty-eight water districts here on the island. And I don't have any wells per district. Even if they gave three million dollars per district, they'd owe you a hundred and forty-four million dollars in estate in grant money. And I don't think they have it. Another question I'm going to ask is that, uh, all this money pertaining to wells and, and so on and getting into the EPA requirements, the, uh, the principal interest, force of maintenance and so on for the existing equipment as well as, uh, the new equipment and so on, that's all going to be placed on our water bills. Is that not correct? Is this where the money's coming from to pay this, uh, pay these bonds and so on and interest and whatever? And what kind of effect is this going to have on our water bill? I mean, I read, uh, several publications, articles on it, that districts are considering doubling and tripling their rates in order to get at least enough money to, to, uh, keep them afloat. I hate to use that, that pun. But, uh, I would like to know how they're going, we're going to do it here and how the local water bill is going to be affected. Any comments or, anyone know?
Mr. Di Francisco and Mrs. Woolley, so I think we'll be able to say something.
I, if, uh, everything proceeds as it is currently with the state and the regulations do go into effect as, as I assume will, uh, yes, I do, do think that the water bills are going to, going to have, the water rates are going to have to increase to cover the additional expenses.
You have any ideas how much? I mean, I, I've been reading two and three times what it is now.
Not, not at the moment, no.
You have any idea when we might know?
Uh, well, when we, when I sit down with Mrs. Woolley, when we start preparing a budget, uh, and when we are facing the expenses in front, have these, or total expenses in front of us, I'll have a better idea. So right now, we're just talking about capital expenditures. I, I don't know about operating expenses right now. We haven't turned the systems on yet.
But, but all that falls under the, under our water bills, right? It's all funded to that.
That's correct, yes.
I was intending to speak on this topic. My name is Edgar Alzner. I live at one sixty-four White Hall Boulevard, corner of New Market. And it seems to me that, um, when I look at my water bill, I spend about forty-seven dollars a quarter in winter months and about five hundred and forty-seven dollars when I sprinkle a well on in the summer. So would the village ever entertain the notion of allowing people to drill a well in their backyard and sprinkle their water with well water from their own property? I'd love for you to consider that and have somebody do research as to what it would take to equip the entire village's properties with wells at an economical rate that somebody could do, if that's even feasible. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Ben has a motion to approve the minutes of September nineteenth, twenty nineteen. Deputy Mayor Oliver, second. Deputy, uh, Trustee Delaney. All those in favor? Aye. That carried seven zero. All right, now we can come down to, uh, the consent calendar. Have we taken care of everything on the consent calendar here?
Uh, I'm sorry, Mayor. I apologize, but there may be a correction on the minutes, but I'd just like to begin.
All right.
Page six, item three under Public Works. The minutes currently read five solar power-based pails. Uh, I believe although I was not at the meeting, it was relayed to me that there may have been approval for eight pails, but not five. So I wanted to determine that. That his practice, I think he was correct. I think we said we was going to put some in the parks.
But it was a discussion. We only approved five. And we, we had, we hadn't made an amendment to where we were going to put the others. So one of the things that Trustee Francisco said is that we're going to look at that in coordination with Mr. Blake. And they were going to then determine what if.
I know we were about to.
Right. And everybody had more, well, it was just the, the reason for five.
Very well. I, I understand the suggestion then. It was discussed, but only approval for five was given. In that case, there is no amendment to the minutes. Thank you.
All right, now we come to the consent calendar. And, um, shall I address five D, E and seven?
Yes, uh, if, absent objection, I believe we noted that they would be removed from the consent calendar, and they are so.
All right. We don't have to go any further than that?
At this point, no.
Oh, okay.
We do the consent calendar, and then we do items five, E and seven.
Oh, I understand. Right, right. Um, at this time then, uh, may I, uh, ask for a motion to approve the consent calendar?
I'll move the consent calendar.
Assistant, second?
Absent five D and seven.
And five D.
Five D, five D, D and seven, and three and four A and more.
And already do we need to get.
Five and second, Trustee Hire, and all those in favor? Uh, that motion carried in the end, yes, they, aye?
Yes. I think that was right behind Peter's head.
I didn't see it.
It's a bad one, sorry.
So. Are we doing our final consent calendar?
Uh, I believe we are now done with consent calendar, and you may wish to now have a separate motion on items five, D, E and seven.
All right, I knew that there was something that was hanging there. All right, is there a motion on five D, five D and seven?
Uh, Mayor, I believe the motion in this case would first be to declare emergency.
Oh, okay. Oh, yes, all right, let's get to the topic of this. All right. Um, members of the board, I'd like to move on to this five D, five B and seven, the consent calendar. I'll be interested in that. Would Mr. Di Francisco please come and fill them?
Do you have anything further to add?
Take it. Based on the discussion, uh, is there a motion to declare emergency so as to authorize the purchases without competitive bidding?
I'll be cautious. I'll say it.
Okay, Trustee Delio, Trustee Delaney. All those in favor? Aye. Um, the motion carried, uh, seven zero. Um. The emergency resol- the emergency resolution, waiting competitive bidding, is passed. There is now a motion to approve items five D, five B and seven. I move the items. Um, Trustee, uh, Delio?
Yeah.
Trustee Dela- uh, Foley, and all those in favor? And that carried seven zero. All the items are approved. All right, at this time, I think we can move to.
Mayor, there probably would be two and on items.
Oh, wait.
Is there a motion to suspend the rules?
Is there a motion to suspend the rules? Deputy Mayor Oliver, and Trustee McCrinos, and all those in favor? And that carries. Oh, I'm sorry. Did you want to speak to those items?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Uh, as the board is aware, we are in the process of, uh, renovating the first floor bathrooms at the library. Uh, in the course of the demolition work, uh, which took place over the last, uh, week or so, uh, it was discovered behind one of the walls, a, a drain line that is severely corroded, appears to be leaking, uh, and needs to be replaced. Um, I'm asking the board tonight to, I received a change order, I'm sorry, from the company doing the work who will repair the pipe or replace the pipe for us. Uh, so I'm asking the board to, uh, approve this change order for nine thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars in order for them to, uh, replace this pipe and, and not delay this project any further. Because waiting till the next board meeting, uh, they wouldn't be able to move forward with the project and, and seal up the wall or anything like that.
So is that price kind of in line with going?
It's actually, we actually did get, when we reached out to them, they gave us a price that was higher than this one. Plus, these are the guys on site doing the work. It's, it's easier for them to do the work and move on.
Is there any damage from the leak?
Um, there, there doesn't appear to be any. Um, there, there's been a, there was a drip pan in the downstairs bathroom that was catching water from this, so. I mean, they're going to fix the area around the pipe, uh, the flooring and et cetera, as part of the construction project. But the pipe itself, the section that's corroded is going to be cut out and replaced with a new pipe. Yes, the project, yes, the project. This project came in, uh, well under budget. And there is, and there is enough funds in this, in this capital project to support, uh, this change order.
Okay, then a motion to.
Motion to approve.
To approve, thank you. Trustee Hire and, uh, Trustee, um, McCrinos, and all those in favor? And that motion carried seven zero. All right. We completed everything that we had to.
There's a second change order.
There's another change order.
We are agreeing. Same rules, and then.
Can you stop a second?
Is there any, any comments on that, that I do that, uh, that we moved that?
Very good. You know, the, the St. Paul's Conference Station, uh, was paused, uh, late this summer because of, uh, design and, uh, for workmanship, paused the project. We took the time at that point to revisit the design. We came up with a much better design, with tighter measurements. The change order we received, uh, a week and a half ago, um, uh, I'm now requesting of this board, uh, additional funding, twenty thousand dollars for the change order. And, um, which would bring the change order to over sixty-five thousand dollars, or thirty-six thousand dollars. If the budget right now is for twenty thousand dollars more. And this is to, to finish off the project.
May I have a motion to, uh, to Trustee Delaney?
I'm sorry, uh, we also need a transfer from contingent to fund the additional work. So the transfer and, uh, okay, the change order, two items.
Those two together, can you release yours?
Thank you.
Trustee, uh, Trustee Hire, and all those in favor? And that motion carried, uh, seven zero.
Mayor, I'd like to ask, Ralph? Since we proved this tonight, can you give me a vague idea, give the residents a vague idea, when the bathroom will be finished?
Yes, the, the, I'm expecting in the next twenty-four to forty-eight hours a breakdown of that entire change order body contract to, to make sure that we're not double paying for anything such as supervision or labor that we already paid for. There's credits due. We're asking to identify all of them. So the worst case, we'll have fifty-five remaining down. Once we okay that, it should proceed within a week or so, as he has outlined up.
Will it be done by a turkey truck?
I, I, I can't say that today.
All right, now we come to, um, comments from the citizens on non-agenda items.
Yes, uh, I'd love to address the village and the board, uh, on the issue of St. Paul's, because I was unable to be at the last meeting. So, reading the Garden City News on that article that they published, I made myself some copies of significant pages, and, uh, I can either read it all, whatever I want to do, or I can simply, uh, read through and show you green and pink and yellow highlights that use the words, um, deterioration, problems, things that have gone bad in the building. The reason why those things went bad in the building is not because of a negligent reason, but because of a negligent reason. The village fathers that were there, not you, before, chose to not do things, and therefore allowed the building to deteriorate, and therefore we now have these problems, okay? In summary, I, it, it, I'm familiar with the building. My wife was a teacher there. I was in the building when it was beautiful. I took a tour of the building shortly after it was abandoned. It started decaying. Then, many people volunteered to close the roof holes. Many people volunteered to close the windows at their own cost. They were all rejected by the village fathers at the time, okay? And I see now there's some positive movement to try to stabilize things, okay? That should have never been necessary if it hadn't been done the way it was. There was definite negligence at tho, in those days, okay? Now, my solution for paying for this whole thing is very simple, because the village fathers that were in power then should be sued. Where is Mr. Kenny? Bring him back. Let him sue them, okay? Or the village should sue them. And once that suit takes place, I can guarantee you they will be found guilty, and as being found guilty, they will have to pay up. But they're protected by insurance. Well, then the insurance company has to pay what they're supposed to pay, and that's how this thing is going to be paid for. So I asked the village board to get Kenny back, or take it upon yourselves to sue the village fathers and collect the insurance money that's due, so that the citizens of this village do not have to pay out of their pockets for the negligence of our forefathers. Thank you. Amen.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else?
I have, I have one other question, if you may.
Oh, it's a question.
When I report something to the building department or the traffic department, does that become something they officially have to act on, or is that something that's done if they feel like it? I, I reported two incident, in situations in the village that trouble me regarding traffic, okay? And one of them is very minor, so they replaced the stop sign, but didn't put the vertical stripes, but there are trees around, so you can't see the stop sign, but if the vertical stripe was there, you'd at least know there's a stop sign coming. That's on the corner of White Hall and New Market, where you chose to remove a stop sign and then put it back after there was an accident. So you put the stop signs back, but you couldn't put the vertical stripes back. And the more, much more significantly serious one is a left turn or no left turn sign on Sherry Valley Avenue by the middle school when you're going south. There's a black box that hangs, and it has a very invisible red double circle with an even more white invisible line going through it, which is or is not on sometimes during the day. People that come to that sign don't know whether it's a no left turn sign or whether it's a left turn sign, because the arrow that says to the left is dominating the diagonal line that goes through it. And I've been seeing people in traffic that think during rush hour when it says no left turn, it's actually a left turn lane, and they're lining up, and one car after the other is making a left turn on the Cathedral Avenue. And brought that to the attention of the traffic department. They told me to call, uh, the county because it's their problem. Uh, I don't feel like, at the age of eighty-one, I don't feel like chasing around, okay?
But you have to understand, sir, that some of the roads in this village are traffic roads, and we have no control over them.
Yeah, I know, but the village can ask more than I can ask.
If you've had envelops in Estrel County DPW, you're wrong.
Really?
You're really.
Okay, I will call the DPW and ask the county to give them a piece of advice.
Stop sign you're talking about? You talking about the reflective material, stop sign? Are you talking about the reflect?
The first one, the reflective stripe on the vertical, it's, it's a big help when you see a stop sign, especially when a tree obliterates the stop sign.
Where is this stop?
White Hall and New Market. On going east and west on New Market. There used to be a stop sign there with those things. They took it down when they put Kensington and Brompton stop signs up or something. And then when there was a big accident right at the corner, they put them back.
Does he see the danger?
We'll, we'll, we'll take them back, sir. We'll have fifteen, depending on all security.
If I leave another four minutes, I'll have to put on another cap and then speak to somebody else.
Mrs. Oram?
Catherine Oram for Maryland Anne Hill. Um, going back to the work session, which was Thursday, the thirteenth of September, um, I was put in a position that I, as a resident of the village, had to make a decision either to go to my property owner's meeting, which was that night, or the work session. I chose to go to the property owner's meeting because Laura Gillen from the town was speaking, and also the construction company from the Long Island Rara, so we could hear, you know, what they normally tell us. I do not recall, and it would have been me who did not see any announcement in the Garden City News pertaining to that meeting. I do know in Village Alerts, the Friday before, Mrs. Albin did put something about this work session. Now, what I'm, why I'm saying this, because it upset me that I had to make a decision, and, and, and there were two very important meetings that I wanted to go to. But prior to the twelfth, earlier that week, I bumped into Bill Belmer. Now, as you all know, Bill Belmer comes to every table, though he is not here tonight, I just don't forget. Um, and making conversation with him, I said, gee, Bill, you're going to go to work session? He said, what work session? Now, Bill Belmer, so either things have to be better publicized, may, and, and if it had been written in the newspaper, maybe you could say it would be on the first page or something like that, but if I hadn't seen it in the Village Alerts, and not everybody gets Village Alerts, I would not have known. But again, what bothers me is I had to make a decision between two, shall I say, bodies of government in our village, my property owners, and the village at home, and I don't see why I, as a resident, have to make that decision. End of comments.
Thank you for your comments. Mr. Salem?
Recently, the board has authorized twenty, twenty-one million dollars of bond issuance, is that correct? Sixteen and five, twenty-one? Yes. Um, when will the bonds be issued? Approximately?
Yeah, we'll start working on that in the next few weeks.
Okay. Um, earlier in the meeting, somebody mentioned a forty-eight million dollar number, right? Is that related to water? What, what was that?
Water.
What? I was, I couldn't hear it well.
Yeah, water.
Water.
Yes, that's the plan for addressing the emerging contaminant.
What, what part of the whole project does that represent?
The entire project, from engineering to?
Fixing all the wells?
Yes.
It's not finished?
Correct.
Um, just following up on, on, uh, the previous question about where the money comes from to pay for the water bonds? Does the water department have an actual budget of its own?
Yes.
Or it does? So the money would have to come from water bills and not from the general budget? General tax? So does those taxing amounts go up, or the water bill will go up? Is that correct?
That won't be passed. Hundred percent decided.
Okay, um, under what circumstances would a referendum of the residents be required before bond could be issued? Are there state laws, village code?
Is there, you know, there are rules and regulations supporting that?
There are both mandatory referenda and permissive referenda. I believe the bond to which you're referring would be a permissive referenda, that is, that citizens could petition, uh, they'd have to gather a certain number of signatures, there's a certain timeframe involved, uh, but there is the potential for a referendum, which is why they have what's called an estoppel period, the period during which, uh, some action could be taken to challenge the validity of the bonds. It's not a challenge based on the wisdom of the bonds, it's a challenge that would be based on some procedural irregularity or defect.
So there's no legal requirement to have a referendum then?
In this case, that is correct.
Okay, um, what is it? The total cost for, for the water renovation is forty-eight million dollars, correct? What, what timeframe would that be spent? What, what period of time would it?
We don't know. Can't answer that at the moment. I mean, uh, we've started, but, uh...
Is it a couple of years, in five years, ten years?
Again, it comes back to what the state decides, uh, when they're going to impose new regulations. If they give us time, it could be two, three, four years. If not, it could be fairly quickly. It could be a year, three, four, a year or less.
Okay, um, here's the crucial question. Does the board believe it can afford the dual challenges of repairing St. Paul's and the water system? And do this without enormous increases in village taxes?
I'm not the finance person, but yes, I think that we have the ability to handle that kind of debt.
And can I ask a clarifying question? Are you guys insinuating like we should just keep the contaminated water and save some money? Is that what you get? And it feels like, it feels like, you know, okay, guys, it's no big deal, you know, we'll just all grow to and enjoy it.
No, I think, I think he's actually, I think he's actually going the opposite way. He's basically saying it's because of the tremendous expense that we're going to have with water, that we should consider not spending money on St. Paul's.
Yeah, I know, we should probably fix, play balls and fix the water. That's the best case scenario.
And without bankrupting the village?
Sure, exactly, without bankrupting the village, yeah.
What is the total number for that, do you know?
We don't know, but, you know, I, I know that one thing's fallen down, one thing's fallen, you know, uh, coming back with a contaminant that we want to get, you know, cleaned out. We're not going to save two bucks and have buried water.
Mr. Salem, I understand your point of view, but bottom line is that we're dealing with the water, it's an emergency which affects the entire of it. As far as with St. Paul's, we've had this discussion infinitum for the last nine months to a year. So first, we evaluate it, we're stabilizing, and then we're going to abate. So bottom line is, those are the three things that we're doing right now with St. Paul's. Nothing else is being done with St. Paul's until we do those three things. So if that ends up, whatever that cost is, the village can afford to do those expenses. So I, we can't sit here and talk about it theoretical when we have no idea what we're going to do after that. Nothing is set in concrete after that. That's the best answer I can give.
And they do nothing. I don't know.
We don't know, but those are the three things that we're doing right now. I think we're four minutes.
What is the cost of abatement? Do you have any idea about that?
If you can tell me what we have to do inside, then, then, then you, if you can go to the building and tell me what it is, then I can give you the answer. We'll, we'll know that after we stabilize.
And, um, the question I asked when I asked was, why don't we get the opinion of the residents where they want to go ahead with St. Paul's? And if not, then why do we spend the money on abatement?
Because even if you want to tear down the building, you still have to, you have to debay it. Okay? Here, here's the bottom line. As much as you may want to tear the building down, and you may feel that time has passed, the bottom line is the residents in this village who feel the opposite deserve that same right. So this board is giving all residents the right to choose. In order to give them the right to choose, we have to take the steps that we're doing. That is the commitment that we have to all of our residents, regardless of their opinion.
I have no problem with what you just said, but we have to ask the people where they You're saying that there's a lot of people who want to save the building, and there's a lot of people that want not save the building. Only one way to find that out is to have a referendum. You're saying there's a lot, you're saying a referendum will say, keep the building. Let's find out.
Mr. Salem, we're doing the best that we can. I think we're doing better than that. We are following the steps that are reasonable and logical to find out where all of the information that we need to make a final decision. And we have your best interest at heart, and we don't think that we are going to cripple people in the village with taxes. Certainly would not take steps that would do that. So it takes time, and you have to hang in there, and you have to have some confidence, and we will keep you fully informed. You know, I read a lot of things in the paper where we don't keep people informed, we don't, you know, uh, we're annoying the public, et cetera, et cetera. None of that is factual. None of that is factual. Everything that we receive, we put it out to you in its entirety. So please, relax. We're not going to pick some kind of an alternative that would cripple your taxes, cripple you with taxes, really. We have absolutely no choice, on the other hand, with the contamination of our water. And we will do the best we can to handle that debt. But we do have resources, uh, surpluses, it goes on and on. We're in good shape, read the Moody reports, and we have your best interest at heart, and that's the best that I can say to you now.
Okay.
Mr. Stiller?
I see there's a new building on the village website about water issues. It's very well-written, and, uh, I commend whoever wrote it, whoever put it together. It, it really helps to understand what's going on with the one-four dioxane. Uh, I do hope if this forty-eight million dollars that has to be paid for, for the, getting the one-four dioxane and its other contaminants out of the water, uh, I hope that, that once you know what it costs, if it is going to cost an increase in the water bill, that you let the residents know as, as soon as possible. Uh, and, uh, thank you for all you're doing to address the water issues. I do agree with Mr. Salem, that once you know that, the cost, and you put it out to residents so that they know what, what the water bill's going to be, and you let them know what the cost of St. Paul's will be, that you then ask for some sort of a referendum, and let them decide, and let them give you input into your decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to come and speak here in the microphone? Mr. Oram?
I wasn't going to say anything for the rest of the evening, which, uh, was most you liked, uh, but... Uh, but I didn't like the answer that was given to Mr. Salem. I think it was pertaining to dirty water and whatever. It's not. It pertains to want and need. You have to separate the difference. We need clean water. People want St. Paul's, but we don't need it. So, we have to go with need first and then address want. Thank you. And please, be a little kinder to residents, especially you don't want to be answered. Alright? Don't be so sarcastic or flippant with them.
Excuse me, sir. I, 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 I'm sorry. I think that's, I'm sorry. I think, no, excuse me, excuse me. You spoke. I'll speak now.
Okay, fine.
Okay, I'll speak now. There was absolutely no disrespect whatsoever. We may have disagreed at some points and we may have tried to explain it the best we could. In addition to that, when residents get up there, they are allowed four minutes. I would be easily willing to bet that Mr. Salem stood at that podium probably more than doubled that time. And the reason for that was, for, the reason for that was out of the respect that we have always shown Mr. Salem, and especially for all the years that he has been here and the many items that he has commented. So, to sit there and to say that we were disrespectful to him and that because of his, now, his age, that we were not done. I'm not finished yet. You can say whatever you want when I'm done. And for you, and for you to, to make that claim against this board is totally without merit. Now, again, that may be your, your opinion, but lovely, this is on videotape, so please look at the videotape, because we did not disrespect him in any way. We answered his questions, we gave him more than double the amount of time, and we attempted to explain it to him in the best way that we could. I don't appreciate that statement.
Yeah, I just, I just heard that the dirty water comment and I, I didn't know that. Would I have to go to videotape and see it? Fine. But I know what I heard.
The, the insinuation, that is probably my question, and then I think it's valid. We heard from a lot of people coming up here questioning the cost of the water and the eventuality of that reflect, being reflected on the bill. Unfortunately, it might be a reality, but I don't understand if we're, we're objecting to it enough to say like, hey, let's just deal with our dirty water. We have, this is a, this is a one-island problem that needs to be addressed. We have to deal with it. Uh, you know, uh, we've gone to great lengths to explain it. Theresa puts out a great column every week that has, tracks all the progress towards it. It's not as if, you know, you're gonna be snuck up upon with a really big water bill and, and that there's no communication as such. So, I understand that you're asking for respect, but I would also ask for the same respect in that every single conversation we have shouldn't be adversarial, as though the board is trying to pull the wool over someone's eyes, or the community's eyes, with a completely transparent process that we go through on everything, whether it's St. Paul's, whether it's the water. Okay? So, that's where, uh, the nature of my comment is, why would you wanna, you know, why would you want to, uh, insinuate that there's some, you know, backdoor, quickie race to everyone's rage that may or may not be reflected to change, you know, the, uh, the validity of the water or the purity of the water? This has been a process that's been going on for a while.
Why are you going, why are you going in this direction when no one went in that direction? You're, it's something that, that exists.
I explained, I explained my comment. I believe you can observe it, you can support it a lot with a lot of your confidence. I would ask that the same respect given, we give it to the board that we give to you guys too. Everything doesn't have to be a battle. You know what I mean? We're, we're all in this literally together. We all drink the same water.
We all. Well, but yes, if you, if, look at a little more science and, and I do, because I read a lot. There was a big article out now, it was entitled, "There's No Such Thing As Clean Water." No such thing.
All right, Mr. O'Rourke, thank you for your comments. Thank you for your comments, Mr. O'Rourke. Yes?
When I'm warm enough that I thought something would come up here and say, Steve Harvey, Meadow Street, is there any steps being taken for any kind of lawsuit against the companies that have caused the one-four dioxide?
Yes, we're in a big one-four section.
Yeah, we're in a, we filed that over a year ago. Okay, it might be good to maybe bring that up when we're talking about all the expenses, that there is something going on to try to recoup some of that.
It's out there.
Okay, I'm just saying, tonight it wasn't mentioned.
Okay.
Thank you.
You know, there is something that I'd like to, uh, speak to you about as citizens of our community. Um, and this has to do with us contacting you. It would be so helpful if you, it depends sometimes how dates fall, how much, uh, alert we can give you of things coming up. We ask you on the homepage of the website to give us your email address. We have nowhere near the number of email addresses that we should have. We could send out email blasts and tell all of you a lot more. I'm seriously asking you to go home and, if you have not done so already, to go home and get your email on the website. Let us have it so that we can communicate with you. We would not be sharing it with anyone else. And I do agree with Mrs. O'Rourke that we were caught in a tight spot there with the two meetings on the same night, that we could have avoided or you would have realized that you had an alternative and they made a choice. Please give us your email address so that we can contact you and be in closer communication with you. Thank you. At this time, I'm going to ask to adjourn this meeting. Uh, may I have a motion? All in favor?